Wait.
Is she ready?
Give it some seconds. Yeah, she's got us hooked up on it.
Uh, it's thirty-five seconds.
Yeah.
Hello, sir.
The long minute.
That's the way it always is.
I still have about twenty-nine minutes.
Do you? Let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to start tonight's Quirrell Town Council meeting now with roll call. Jason Little, accent, Patricia Ball here. Kevin Burke.
Here.
Michael John.
There.
Brian Moore.
Here.
Okay, uh, do we have any comments from the floor?
Wait, where's the agenda on here?
It's this.
Approval of the agenda?
We don't have to approve the agenda.
We don't have to anym- or the past minutes?
No.
Oh, the minutes.
Yeah, it's not on here.
I see that.
It's usually up next night.
Thanks.
It's good to know this. It's a branding format.
It is.
And so, yes.
So, anyway, I'll make a motion to approve the ju- the minutes as presented.
Have a first, do we have a second?
A second.
Have a first and second from Mike and Brian to approve the minutes. Any discussion on them? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Let be known it passes. Anything else in between? Roll call in the minutes?
No, that it's now, now we can go, the rest of it's in order.
Okay. Uh, any comments from the floor? Okay. Let be known there's no comments. Um, the only thing I have on my mind is, uh, just want people aware, there is sign ordinances out there in place for temporary signs and that, and I think there's a lot of them starting to be pop up again, so, uh, Todd will be looking at those in the future and pulling them and, uh, calling the people, uh, if there's a phone number on where they can pick them up. And also, Trish, you had something?
Yes, um, I had a conversation with, um, Pat Cook and she, she wants to reiterate the, um, the name of Yelling Park and to make sure that Yelling Park is, um, people understand why, so I'm gonna read this quickly, what she wrote. Yelling Park has been a great asset to the town of Santa Claus, Spencer County, and the people who visit Yelling Park to participate in activities and tournaments. Yelling Park is named after R.J. Jim Yelling, who was Santa Claus at Santa Claus Land in Holiday World from nineteen forty-six until nineteen eighty-four. Santa Jim was a man who gave his time and talent to many causes. He initiated the Santa Claus American Legion post and supported it throughout his lifetime. He supported Merry Help Christians Church in Mariah Hill and brought much joy to a great many children as Santa Jim. He loved baseball and was president of the Indiana Kentucky Baseball League. He was a great fan and supporter of the Mariah Hill Yankees baseball team. When he retired from owning, operating the chateau, he became a service officer and helped veterans get pensions and help for medical problems. My hope is that Yelling Park will always retain that name and the honor of this man who served others in so many ways. And that, that is directly from Pat, um, so she just wanted to reiterate the Yelling Park meaning. Thank you.
Yeah. I did not know the person and, uh, so I just heard everything about him, so.
Yeah.
And I agree, it'd be great if we can keep the name going in the future.
Okay.
So. Uh, anybody else? Mike, Brian, you have anything? Okay, uh, if not, we're gonna move on, uh.
Fire department, it's not for personal.
Fire department.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and if, somebody wanna make a statement about the barbecue fest?
Yeah, quick dinners, they go out fast, barbecue dinner is June twenty-eighth, beginning at eleven a.m., and usually what, Mike, by twelve they're out.
Oh, even, maybe earlier, eleven-thirty.
Eleven-thirty.
I mean, it, it, you better, you better be over there.
Yeah, be there, or be square.
And, uh, just the other thing about that is a lot of that food that they serve is donated from local businesses. I can't tell you off the top of my head who's doing it, but I know it has been.
But local donations.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, next, uh, B.B.?
That's you.
Not used to all these abbreviations. Park and rent.
You have our report, uh, keeps raining, the grass keeps growing, so we're, we're keeping up trying. Uh, the only two pressing items, well, first item, though, uh, we are hoping to have volunteer day on the twenty-eighth fifteen, uh, that'll be from eight a.m. to twelve p.m. Uh, nothing too hectic, just doing a little bit of painting, uh, a little bit of mulching and landscaping, so, um, we're hoping to get fifteen, ten to fifteen volunteers and we should be able to get it on time before lunch.
Cool, you might wanna reserve some plates.
Yeah, there you go. Uh, the only other two items I have, uh, the first one, the park board has made a recommendation, uh, that we have modified the fees ordinance, uh, regarding food trucks, uh, to change the fee to twenty-five dollars, basically they would pay a hundred dollars upfront, and then if they show up today, then they get refunded seventy-five, uh, one. Two, kind of, it hasn't been a major issue, but we have that instances where people just don't show up. And that's kind of disappointing whenever you have people coming to an event and food trucks don't show up. So, we feel like there may be a little incentive for them to show up, uh, and a lot of the trucks felt like twenty-five dollars was a lot more powerful, uh, so, just either weather or another thing, you never know how the turnout's gonna be, so the, the park board was a member of that, and that's the recommendation that they would make, if you all would care to entertain.
What, what do we currently charge? Anything?
Uh, so currently it's twenty-five dollars just for normal daily use, and then if there's special events or tournaments, it's two hundred dollars a day, so, um, yeah, that's kinda what it's at currently.
So this could be a flat twenty-five?
Yeah, we've had issues where like, if the weather's not great, like even if it's marginal, the turnout isn't as good, and so then the food trucks feel like they're getting slighted a little bit, um, I think too, whenever America's Christmas Home County does, the food trucks up here, I believe it's the same policy, it's twenty-five dollars a day, we kind of same deal, they put a deposit down and then make sure they show up, type of thing, so. That'll help in that aspect too, it'll be uniform, everybody knows, hey, when you come to Santa Claus, whether it's America's Christmas Home County or town, this is what we're charging.
So if they sign up and they don't come, then they forfeit the hundred dollars, right?
Yeah.
The Honeyberg Ride and Coffee Shop has a truck now, I'm supposed to let you know that.
Okay.
But, yeah, so another coffee truck, we'll get up Tom's and the Honeyberg Ride. I'm fine with that.
I'll have to keep, uh, keeping up, they, they, the, the county sends out, uh, like monthly or every like five or six weeks, they send out a list of trucks that are licensed and, and, so it's a very simple process, county just has to inspect their truck, so.
Excellent, okay. Okay, do you have that ordinance?
In that vein, I have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero-two, an ordinance altering section of municipal code concerning parks and recreation fees, which does just that. It's a deposit of one hundred dollars a day, of which seventy-five dollars will be refunded to the user that, if they actually do use the park, or so to a licensing with the board. So that is that for your first reading.
Made the motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh-two.
I second.
Have a first and second from Mike and Trish. Do we have any other discussion on this?
My only discussion would be is that they also need to be aware that the refund checks won't have to, to be, they'll be like a month behind.
They cross those.
Because they'll have to go through the vouchers and stuff as well, so they'll have to be aware with that.
True.
That's the only thing.
I, that's just.
I mean, 'cause if we're writing a check back to them, I mean, the only way, other thing that they could do is I guess they could write two checks, then we would only cash one, and then you could return the seventy-five dollar check back to them that same day.
Kevin, do you have any issues with that?
You can't really do that, can you?
Well, I mean.
You're not supposed to hold it, you're supposed to deposit money when you receive it.
Yeah, that's true.
Oh, yeah, so we can't.
Yeah.
I think it's true. I was just trying to think of keeping them from like.
I know.
You know, 'cause I mean, they're gonna have business again, and they're not gonna get their deposit.
Yeah, seventy-five dollar reconcile is a big reconcile with a small business.
Yeah.
So do we need to add that timeframe into the, uh, second reading, maybe?
Do we need to add that?
Well, we can, we can put that in our license agreement.
Okay.
Do they sign an agreement? You, do you have it signed in the license agreement whenever they come in?
Well, we haven't, but we, I think we should have, it would be pretty simple.
Yeah.
Um, in that instance, I mean, we would just put version there, it's like, what, net forty-five or something?
I'll look at that, yeah.
Just because sometimes the dates fall weird.
Yes, yeah.
I'll get that, I know I prepared, I've got something for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll get it, I'll put the required changes to that, but that would be in our agreement.
Okay, any other?
No.
If not, uh, I have a motion from Mike and Trish. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Let be known it passes four-zero. Do we need to act on this quicker because of upcoming events or anything?
No, the next, the next event on the schedule would be touch truck, which is the third law, so we should be able to get a second reading, the fourth reading in the coming months.
Okay. Okay.
This land that you were talking about, uh, wanted to add on one sixty-two?
Yeah.
Yes.
Where the?
There's a wooded lot there, it's about two acres, uh, yeah, it's, it's across the street from the hollow block. But it's part of the Santa's land, uh, it's like a two, two and a half acre lot, so.
Wait a minute, is this where the, uh, Melissa was gonna, they were gonna put the?
No.
No, this is not that, like.
No, it's, yes.
It's the one, it's across from there.
On the north side of Ashford, yes.
Okay.
North side of Ashford, next to the other fields up there.
Okay.
So we did make contact, and they are open to entertaining the possibility of selling a boat with the Jericho to get appraisals, uh, before we get received, so.
Okay, I make a motion, uh, will we approve the council, give council's approval to order appraisals for the property?
Okay, I have a first, do we have a second? Okay, okay, I have a first from Mike and a second from Brian, uh, to order appraisals, uh, for this property. Any other discussion, or we know who we're gonna have appraise it, or?
I mean, there's a long list of people that we could get, if we, I think we need to minimum to correct to, yeah.
Okay, okay, I have no other comments, nobody else does. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Let be known it passes four-zero.
Thank you. Uh, does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns about anything? That's all I got.
Appreciate your help.
Thank you very much, I apologize, I gotta get going here tomorrow, it makes work for proud.
Okay.
How's it going here?
No.
I'll get some passing and even if it be anything to report in the meeting, so.
We have this report, yeah.
Okay. If anybody has any questions?
I, I have a question, this won't make me popular, but there's a house that's being built on the tenth fairway, what used to be the first fairway, that was started a long time ago.
Yes?
Yeah, I went, uh, isn't there a year completion on the properties?
No idea, it's not what I had.
It hasn't been there a year yet, because, um, the house, the house beside it that's for sale was listed, and then they had to come up with a, an easement, and that wasn't a year ago.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'll keep you informed.
Okay.
Okay?
I can help with that building permit.
Yeah, see what the.
The date it's meant to be.
I mean, we had an issue up on North Melkier with a house that didn't get finished in almost two years, so. And I thought there was some type of thing that, that from the start to finish of the house.
It's a year.
It's a year, so. Okay.
You'll let us know on that?
Yeah, I can pull the building permits and let you know.
Okay.
What they did, what's.
Mr. Bo, you're up.
All right. Well, I think that your report has been sent to everybody, um, nothing drastic, any new changes or anything like that. If anybody has any questions, they'd like to report or anything else, I'll attempt to answer, I acknowledge that I do have.
So we don't, we don't have any police reports in, in pack, okay?
We didn't do it, but.
All right?
You wanna give us the highlights? You don't have to read them.
Yeah, so.
But please, please give it to Jane after you're finished.
Yeah.
So she has it as a record. Do you want like callouts, uh?
Just give us an, an, an average number of.
Yeah, we did average number of two callout, off-duty callouts, uh, seven citations within the town of Santa Claus, nineteen warnings, there were seven crash reports, four, four vehicle inspections, seven domestic disturbances, uh, C, two medical emergencies, twenty-nine disturbances, two theft, theft reports, three verbal warnings. In total, there were thirty-six case and investigation reports done, zero warrants, zero gun permits, one arrest, and two assist motor arrests.
Okay, any comments, go on with the other.
Yeah, and then, uh, high school traffic was throughout the school, or you know, throughout the school year, um, and statistically other agencies were County Dale, both of those two departments, and all the, uh, part-time and reserve hours were completed.
Nothing new, huh?
Nope, nothing crazy.
All equipment holding up fine?
All equipment's doing good, um, I know we're talking about the budget and stuff like that, about different stuff, um, so, we have to put in some work for this vehicle or anything like that, I know that's discussion committee in chief, um.
And the plate, the things came for the truck?
Yeah, we finally have the truck out on the road after six months, but, uh, I think everything's going good there. I know we're waiting on a computer saying for the truck, but he's able to use it and still work properly, you know, still be able to do his duties of town and everything like that, so.
Okay.
Um, Todd's wife is actually doing great, she had a medical emergency that, uh, threw all of us for a loop, and we all pitched in and did what we needed to do for the department, but she's.
Good.
Miracle, as he would say, so, nobody really knows what happened to her, doctors about, so, she's back good, Todd's back to work, so, all good there.
We had enough, uh, officers to work holiday world traffic?
Uh, we do have, uh, officers working ho- uh, holiday world traffic, I know Keith is taking care of the scheduling, I assume to, to the best of my knowledge, it's all been handled, um, I know we haven't had a callout as far as, I've not gotten a call to, hey, you know, we need two more officers, or we're short-hanging or anything like that, so, as far as I'm aware, it's going smoothly.
Good. Anything unusual going over there as far as arrests so far this year?
No, no, that's actually, I'm, I think smoothly, so.
And what about over here?
Uh, everything's good over here, we do our laps due there, I know, to, to my knowledge, there hasn't been any traffic stops or citations or anything written inside of there, um, we s- we're doing something we did last year, I mean, we do have more authority now since everything passed and all that, but we're not changing anything drastic up to where we're going in there looking for anything specific or, uh, patrolling for or anything like that, it's still your normal laps and stop, talk to kids and traffic laws and make sure everybody's having a good time and being safe.
Okay, and you're watching the golf carts and that over at the village too?
Yep.
Seems like a lot of, or, uh.
James, James pulled over for, went over in my parking lot.
Yeah, I, I got a couple out here.
Yeah, I saw, uh, somebody announced, when I'm time to get pizza in the parking lot.
Yeah, I, I stopped one out here, and I said, sorry, can I have that, and he was like, I live two miles away, and I'm like, you're still gonna have to use your truck and come get it, and he's like, are you kidding me, I'm like, oh, like, that's the law, you know, and he, he went back in and probably went back out later when the lawyers were around, but we can only stop what we see.
That's right.
Okay, well, appreciate you guys' help and.
Yeah.
And, uh, need anything, uh, you can reach out to any of us.
Yep, I've been, I've been around all week, uh, while she's gone, and I believe everybody has that number, if you don't, you can give these away, so, nine-one-one, easy to call. Yeah, if you get any questions, let me know.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you'll get a copy of that, so you have our records, okay?
Great.
Yeah.
Trust everybody as well, um, I have a scant list tonight, so I'm sure you're all happy for that, I just wish I had full room to share that with. Oh, the only thing that I have under the trails, um, department, is we are, we were hoping to go up for bid for that next phase of the project mid-month, that may be a bit late, we've got a couple of meetings we gotta work on yet, but, uh, I will be meeting with the engineer this Wednesday, I think at two o'clock, uh, to go over the final design. Uh, we shifted some things around at the high school, two o'clock, all the buildings and things like that, no big deal, just moved the trail into the underground, but that is all I have under trails. Under street department, item that we need to first relate to in my report, um, nothing really jumps out as far as streets, other than, again, E and D paving, uh, has intentions of starting the paving, uh, mid-month, end June that is, and more than likely will start a ton of it, or a piece of milling, um, patching and then folding.
Okay, uh, what about the, uh, road, uh, down by the golf carts, any word on that?
Uh, no, again, it's kind of a tentative tacit agreement, they're gonna hold off on that until like Labor Day.
Okay.
Let the golf season get down, plus it looks like there are some things going on, I shouldn't say that, they're getting ready to install gas services down at the old ship and run, uh, development, the new question down, I don't know what they call it nowadays, the next line danger, you know?
Nah, it's part of the pinnacle deal now.
I guess it will be the next.
It's the new one, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that was, yeah, I just.
They incorporated it into the whole.
The whole thing.
That's why it's wrong, James.
Makes sense. That's all I have under streets. Item G of the wastewater, we have a council consideration, I guess, the invoice numbers down.
Yeah.
I won't recite the invoice numbers, it's too long, too many numbers, and, and what has foreword, is for Big Western Engineering Construction Inspection during the pipelining, um, the pipelineers did not submit it and, and ask for, for this month, but they will just catch that next month, so, Midwestern Engineering questioned the overpayment of five thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-six cents.
Okay, I make motion to approve the Midwestern Engineers, uh, five thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-six cents.
I'll second it. Have a first and second from Brian and Tricia, uh, paid Midwest the five thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-six cents. Any other discussion on this? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, let be known it passes four-zero.
Thank you. Uh, just briefly, mentioning that, my report, um, the usual stuff is on, again, if you look at the top, you can see we are making some progress in our mitigation, and, and again, just, everyone needs to keep in mind that INI is a very dynamic thing, a lot of things affect how it works, you know, it will not work, but if we can just take this data at face value, it shows some improvement. So in May of twenty twenty-five, we treated, uh, almost twenty-three million gallons of sewage, uh, for that same month, we had almost nine inches of rain. In May of twenty twenty-four, we, uh, processed twenty-five million gallons of wastewater, and we had seven point six-two inches of rain.
Good job.
So, again, if you just take that at face value, it shows a reduction, um, in the input, so. Um, a couple of open action items at the bottom, just stuff to report, um, it's like my new thing is, uh, is that we have ordered a new gearbox, uh, for the ditch rotor, fork rotor, uh, number, item under, I'm sorry, under the collection system, open item, and I will repair it after, I'll call it, we did have to repair a ten-inch force main in the industrial park last weekend, um, we were out there for a month of the weekend, um, I won't bore you or make you sad, but, uh, we actually wanted to replace it by a fifteen-foot second of duckling and pipe that's split, um, and to make it even better, it was in a creek, so, uh, yeah. I, I, let me say, the creek probably wasn't there when it was installed, but over the years, south of town has drained more and more and more and more, so, anyway, uh, we do still have a residual leak out there, and I will let the council know, someone did call, items still response, uh, I talked with them Saturday, and basically what we've done is built that impoundment, uh, to trap anything that's leaking, and then we had a back truck move out there, we will actually go downstream as well to make sure that nobody gets it.
Been in some creeks this year, haven't you?
Yeah.
Uh, on that part, did you order that part last month and you still don't have it?
Which part?
There was a.
Rotor?
Rotor.
Yeah, that, they, they're like six weeks out.
Okay.
So I expect it either the next week or early in July.
Okay.
That's really all I have under wastewater proper, but moving on, I still have all my data caught up in the lateral, I can tell you, we've got twenty-nine lateral extensions this year, and we got six new ones in May, there's seemed to be a cluster of.
Cluster.
In the right-hand column, you see that, uh, the performance pipeline, you folks had about six hundred feet of main to line within the villages, just residuals from the original project, they should be here, again, they ordered material, and, uh, they've been promised that it would be here probably mid-month, but you know how that goes, I don't know if we're getting some things these days, so, if they're intent to come back and finish up that last remaining six hundred feet, and then if they get the material from their supplier, they will also begin lining out at the industrial park.
I know they were in my area again a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I think your area, yeah, your area is one that has like a couple, what they call the line segments to do yet, yeah. Uh, and we will be back out there again, because in this process, we've also announced a manhole that is severely leaking, so, we will also use some of these dollars to, uh, re-add those manholes as well. They look like car washes on the inside, let's say, on the ground, so, those not only packages we're worried about, it's also manholes, taking this stuff. Uh, down below, that same column safety, as of May thirty-one, lost time injuries, uh, we had one field in the compound assessment, and that's difficult to revise, which are notified, and those situations need taken care of, we still need to replace the safety coordinator. Under streets, I really, again, nothing, uh, much to add, I will fast forward to the item H underwater, and I will refer that to someone else that's in the know, but, uh, just as a matter of update, uh, the E and W project is complete, so we are now in the main street, uh, and preliminary engineering has begun on the Santa Claus to, uh, Mariah Hill line, we finally got a, a line on paper, and we're trying to pass it around, make sure it works and everything, so, it's still there in ten, I believe, to go out and bid on that project yet this year, obviously later in the year, uh, but obviously it will also go probably well into twenty-six as well, so. That is it, other than I spoke to the industrial park thing, uh, pipelineers will be out there probably mid-month, in July, I'll be starting to line out there, so. Kevin, I assume that you're the assignment of even building sale?
So I put those in the packet, and Kevin and I.
I don't, I don't think you need to approve it, really, the water board is, I think, approved, I wasn't at their meeting.
The water board did approve it, however, they were under the assumption that I needed to have the town council approve it as well, since we, the line that they are signing over is gonna become a town asset, it's gonna be the town's line going forward, so they thought the council needed to also approve, Kevin doesn't think that they need to, so.
Doesn't, doesn't hurt for you to approve.
It was in the package.
That's, that, this is for them taking over from the old, from the air.
Yeah.
Up to, no man. Up to no man's land up on the north side of the river, the old Pocock line is what they're taking over, which they already agreed to do.
Is this the drawing of that?
Yeah, there you go, and that's what they're gonna take the Mariah Hill line off of, I believe, off of that, so it saves us, it actually saves us some money there, like, normally come off of. The Pocock line versus putting a separate heater there, or whatever we have to do.
So how would we make a motion for that?
Uh, to approve the water board's acceptance of the assignment and assumption of easement.
Okay, so moved.
There you go.
Second.
I have a first and second from Trish and Mike with the help of Kevin on that one, and, um, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay, let be known, passes four zero. Question for us, I know we took over this and we got the meters out here, is there a way they enhance that, to make it look better than just some two-by-fours and?
Since, since it's in town.
It's in town, is there, can we enclose that?
Can we quantify it somehow?
Whatever you got, like, it's just temporary now.
Oh, it's temporary?
So it settles and all that, then we'll go back after, but I don't know what exactly you're looking for, I don't know how to dress up an electric meter.
Uh, I'm just thinking something, looking more permanent, or?
No, it's definitely not permanent, like you said, it gotta be whole, I could take a while to settle, so, before we go say anything, I guess we're gonna just settle.
What's something to think about?
You guys have to get the line, we're gonna do my darnedest, make it happen.
I'm just thinking something more fitting than, I thought maybe that was, could be final, so.
Oh, absolutely not, no, that's, the reason that the support owner didn't give the volume a hole, that'd be whole, so.
Okay.
My question came in a question.
What else, we could put some marigolds?
It, it does have some old original, some old, that will be removed too.
Okay.
A lot of that will go away, it'll just be an electric meter.
Yeah, I didn't know if we could put it in some type of box thing, you know, where the electric companies do and stuff like that.
At some point, they have something to say about that, you know, and I know that they would particularly want their meters enclosed.
Right, wonder if we could, like, Kevin mentioned, build out, like, pine tree thing, or something that.
Give me some ideas.
It's just.
Center boy, break them along around.
I know they will.
Break them along and spray that heck out of it, kill them.
We will let it alone until we see what is the flag.
But it's, yeah, people will be a little bracing old.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
All I have was the counselor, Dylan has questions.
I have nothing else.
You got any questions, Dylan, yet, I know one, I have another one, this is Dylan Morgan, he started with his, what, beginning of May?
Oh, they heard good things about you so far.
Except for he won it, he's not had his baptism under fire yet.
Or you just need to put him in the creek.
Two and a half degrees, you're down here in Wasteland.
Oh, yeah, that's good times.
People driving by, whipping you off.
Put him on that job.
Put him in the creek, would you?
Yeah, he may, he may be up there.
Okay.
Industrial, yeah. He has bid openings for, um, the land that you guys approved, he listed for sale at the previous.
Yes, this is kind of between industrial park attorney, so, it's like subsection, I.
I have a question about the industrial park, I don't know if somebody in here can a- answer it or not, when Cook Development Corporation bought Santa's cottages, did they also buy the land that is in the industrial park that belonged to?
That reindeer's ranch, or whatever they.
No, their little pond, no.
Yeah, okay, I just wondered.
They did not buy the land across the road.
Road, yeah, alright.
So the other family still owns that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, 'cause I actually inquired about whether they could put a cabin or something there.
Oh, yeah.
I told her she had, if I could read some authority over there, unless she was going to use it for itinerant logging.
Right.
Shall I?
Shall.
Uh, the first is from Shannon Gollhausen. That's over six acres. He's got all kinds of good stuff on here, his plan is to have personal lease storage, winery, tasting room, shops, crafts, woodworking, retail showroom, limited food services, vineyard, greenhouse, venue events. Uh, he's got some contingencies on here, which we'll have to take a look at, surveying, like, it's. Offering prices twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars with contingencies.
How many acres?
Right around six. It would be such a two survey, basically, what we had told was extending the line, Kembleton, the front edge on, Burge, is that Burge? So it'd be basically to extend the line straight due south, down to the property line.
I mean, a lot of the stuff that they mentioned in there was zoning would have to be.
Yeah, and he was, he's made a contingent on appropriate zoning for what his intended uses are, so.
Right, which are not uses that were originally intended for the industrial park.
Well, that's right next to the, it's next to a dog.
Yeah.
From Dylan Morgan. Thirty-one thousand dollars.
Six acres again?
Yeah, it's the same piece.
Yes, just making sure.
Let's see if it says anything about intended use. Either residential or commercial. If it doesn't have what the intended use of it is, uh, it is also contingent on residential, though, to either residential or commercial.
Probably the likelihood of getting it pre-zoned residential is not very good.
But you're else.
I know.
You're else discretion, aren't you?
But, uh, everything else down there is either commercial or industrial.
Yeah.
So, as a warning, so people know.
Yeah, and you just turn down the, well, the zoning board, uh, what, Santa Paws, or whatever their name is, and I wanted to put a residence on that property.
Yeah.
For a caretaker.
Right.
A freestanding structure that they intended to use for residential, and they were told basically, not gonna happen.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, they told they couldn't do it.
Yeah, um, I would recommend you table and let me take a look at all of the contingencies and come back with a recommendation for you.
Okay.
And I can explore with the buyers on what their intended use is, and everything.
Okay.
So you need a motion?
Need a motion for that, Mike, or?
Alright, go, somebody instruct Kevin to review him and bring his review and comments back to the council.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Trish, okay, any other discussion, if not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Of those opposed, say nay, let be known, it passes four zero.
Uh, two other things, I do have the SERPRO contract, they made the changes with the five thousand dollar limitation, and basically allowing department heads to make the order for any services that are required with copy to chain for any requests, so it's, so that way, department heads, it's under their purchasing authority, that's why you set it at the five thousand, so Russ could order it if it's an emergency situation, but then they copy chain with it. The only other thing, we're making changes to the employment manual, I just wanted to bring this to your attention, that we've got Family Medical Leave Act in here. I know this has brought your attention when you originally passed this, that the town's not obligated to follow FEMLA. I would probably, I would recommend.
Remove it.
I mean, you can keep medical leave in there, and you can allow people to have unpaid leave for medical reasons, but, take out all the federal language and everything, and, and if you're desirous to allow people in certain circumstances to have some unpaid medical leave, then let me reword it, so it just doesn't incorporate all the federal requirements in there.
Okay, 'cause we had that situation with the, um, young man who worked with Russ, and we used FMA during that time.
Yeah, you can still have unpaid medical leave.
Okay.
But you just need to.
Find a good wording.
Yeah, yeah.
Not use the federal terms in there.
Because they're broad hit all the time, what you're entitled to do, and.
I know.
What your malady has to be, and what kind of, I mean, we can basically make it somewhat discretionary with department supervisors, because that way, if it's something where you can't spare somebody, if you have, you know, you don't have to let them go for twelve weeks.
Can you, can you word it in a way that's discretionary to supervisors?
Yeah, and I think this is what we had before we passed this, if I recall correctly, we had a provision of the old employment manual before this was adopted, that allowed.
Kind of deal like thirteen weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And I mean, if it's done, I mean, to allow for unpaid discretionary leave, well, the same thing could happen if someone's small child dies or something, and they need more than three days off.
Right, right.
They don't have any vacation days left, you know, you probably, if they're a good worker, you want the department supervisor to be able to give them some unpaid time off to cope with the issues. And it's a good thing to have for employees, in my opinion.
Okay.
Okay.
I have one comment on the handbook, I can check anything else, but.
You what?
One thing I would like you guys to consider doing as well, is with the mileage reimbursement, and it be, it be processed the exact same way for every single employee, and what I mean by that is, you know, at my previous, uh, job, everyone had to use MapQuest, and you had to print out the MapQuest directions attached with your mileage claim, so every employee had to use the same thing, and the reason that I'm bringing that up, since we're checking the handbook, I think we should have an actual policy on how mileage is determined when employees travel. Because different GPSs calculate different mileages, um, our mileage reimbursement claims have odometer readings on them, well, you get into situations where two employees are going to the same location, but the mileages are different, you know, maybe someone decided to take a side trip to a shopping center, or whatever, which increased their mileage, or whatever, um, it just makes it cleaner if they can use whatever GPS they want to actually get there. But they take it, like, say, from Town Hall to the Marriott Hotel in that town off of MapQuest, it has to be printed, it has to be attached to their mileage claim, and that way, every single person is using the same to be reimbursed, they can use whatever they want to drive there, but the actual mileage reimbursement, and you guys can choose however you want, if you want to use Google Maps or MapQuest, or whatever. But it gets into some questionable areas again, when someone's using this, and they're getting paid so many miles to go to somewhere, and this person's using this, and they're getting paid so many miles to go to this location, and someone's doing their odometer, well, when I left, my odometer said this, and when I got there, my odometer said this, well, did you subtract for making a ten-mile sidetrack to the Bass Pro Shop and back, and like, there's just a lot of, like, it makes it cleaner if we just adopt a policy for the mileage will be based on whatever, Google Maps or MapQuest, and it will be based from this location to, you know, like, most places where I've worked, you couldn't do mileage, like, from your home, it had to be from your place of employment to the location you're going to, and I believe our handbook does say that, I think it did, I'm pretty sure it says that.
Should be from your beauty station, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it would just be cleaner, especially if the day counts payable, if it wasn't so varying from person employed, employee, just depending, and I'm not saying anyone's doing what I'm doing, I'm just saying if they're using one thing, and someone else is using something else, I mean, it could easily be off.
Yeah.
Several miles, so anyway, I feel like.
So what would be the most standard thing to use, though?
Well, I'm just trying to think, do you have to choose the most direct route, because I was just routing to go down to Alabama, and it gave me four different routes that I can take, like, even Indianapolis, sometimes, sometimes my GPS will tell me to go through Louisville, sometimes.
Well, that would be part of the policy.
Yeah, sometime over to, uh, sixty-seven up there.
I mean, I believe our, my policy, my other place, I believe it's at the fastest route, or something, you, you could set your policy.
Yeah, that's, well, that's the question, what is the policy gonna be, as far as what they have to choose, because, well, because, you know, like, sixty, if you know, I mean, this summer's been really strange, sixty-five, well, it has, like, no construction, I'm not going to end. Normally, I would avoid sixty-five in the summertime, because you know there's gonna be about six places where they're down to one lane, but there's absolutely none until you get up to Indianapolis.
And get off at four sixty-five before you go into downtown, India, because it's a mess.
Yeah, exactly. But, so, I mean, any other summer, I probably would go up through Jasper and hit sixty-nine to get into Indianapolis, because of sixty-five having construction around Columbus, Columbus always had construction, Seymour, that area, so, I mean.
You gotta take effect those detours and.
Yeah, but if you, if you punch in a map for the fastest route to Indianapolis, it's always gonna say sixty-four to sixty-five.
In sixty-five, yeah, that's longer.
Yeah, but it's faster, because it's all interstate versus right now, until they get the mid-stage corridor done, if they ever do.
So it just depends on how you must set the policy, because, you know, if you're paying for travel time, you may want the fastest route, if you're paying for, it may be longer per mile, but it's, you're paying less for hourly wages for travel time, I mean, it doesn't matter what you set the policy, I would just like you to take into consideration possibly working out some sort of a policy that could go, you know, in a handbook, as far as how we're calculating and paying now.
What's the, what's the furthest we travel?
I, I've been up to.
You went up to get the.
They're going to the conference, that's by the furthest.
Fort Wayne, I did South Bend.
That's right.
You went up to like Gary.
I was thinking if we could just do one set fee for travel, but that wouldn't work, you know, yeah, I have to go way north there, no.
The, the A and P bull, or whatever it's called now, move those conferences around.
They do them all the time, yeah, so, so, I mean, I've been, like, said, Fort Wayne and South Bend, and this year it's at French Liff, I think, and, I mean, it varies on the mileage of area every time.
I would say use Spassas, in my opinion.
Web resource.
Use Google Maps, you can use MapQuest, you can use.
I know, but like, Apple Maps and Google Maps sometimes show you totally different.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That's why.
But you need to tell which one they have to use.
That's what we use.
Yeah, that's what I mean, which one do we, I almost think, I almost think a phone one would be us.
My company uses a program called Chrome River, where we have, where we enter our destination, and then they don't make the, the mileage fee, and then.
Yeah.
And then once it gets submitted, they can check to see if there was a detour or anything in there, and they could pull that map over and make it the shortest route, you know, so they clean up the map, and then they'll, you know, adjust the numbers.
My goal decision has to be made tonight, but I'm just throwing that out there, it's a possible change to the handbook.
He's doing his, nah, just, maybe for now, if we just say, um, we need a hard copy of the mapping with the shortest route. Because there's so, there's ways, there's, I mean, there's a million different mapping.
Well, that's why you would just pick one, they could use whichever one they wanted to actually travel with, it's just for getting paid, we're gonna use this, yeah, we're gonna use this standard.
Yeah.
I mean, they can print them out before they leave, and that, I mean, it's just the, it's just the standard, and then they can use whatever's in their car.
MapQuest is probably the most generic.
Chrome River uses Google.
Yeah, I know.
Chrome River does.
Google Maps.
Yeah.
I've never heard of that, that's why I was like, what is that?
Yeah, I had never heard of that one.
It's like a whole app that you kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, you can put destination, tool back in there, everything, so.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
Okay, anything else, Kevin?
Kevin, do we need to approve this contract with Servpro again?
No, they already approved it.
I didn't know if it's.
I just wanted to, Kevin, now there's no change. They approved it with no changes.
Which is, yes.
It was contingent on that, but then Servpro made those changes. I have nothing else for this meeting.
Okay, um, I don't have anything as well. The only thing I have is I just wanted to let everyone know we can do our first month processing with the new utility bill going this month. Um, so they are coming out of the mail looking different. Um, I just want the general public to know to be looking for those. Um, they will not be your traditional, uh, bill cards that are actual deed trifold invoices in an envelope, um, so they're gonna look a little bit different. Uh, but this is our first month and it went very successful. Um, we had a couple glitches we, um, needed to work out as far as, um, so, some people have multiple accounts. And making sure that they all get put into the same envelope to save the town postage, you know, so they're not getting, you know, let's just say someone in our community gets nine bills. And those nine bills will all go in that same envelope, so that way, um, they're not getting nine separate bills in the mail. So, you know, we did have to make sure, verify, all the addresses had to be in exactly the same way for that to happen and everything. So we, we did have, you know, a couple bugs to work out, um, but we got those done before printing and so they're coming out this month as our first month out. And we may have to, we may have to do a few other tweaks and adjustments, but we think we've got it all pretty well laid out, so we're really excited about it. It went smooth, I would say, for our first month, so.
And where are those being mailed from? What city do you think?
Um, they are gonna, I think, gonna go through the Indianapolis post office.
So they get lost in our global.
It's either Indianapolis or Terre Haute. I'm not sure which post office that town goes for, but.
They'll get lost in Louisville. Everything gets lost in Louisville in the postal service.
Well, hopefully that it's in Louisville. So anyway, that, that was my only announcement for that, so that's super exciting.
That's good news.
That is good.
Not to rain on your parade.
Anywhere you can.
That's all I've got. Do you guys have anything else?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are we have an executive session after this?
We are.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
And a redevelopment.
Yep.
And a redevelopment, okay.
Redevelopment any first and then executive session. Nobody has anything else, we'll move to vouchers.
Oh.
Okay, I have general vouchers in the amount of one hundred seventeen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-six cents.
Make a motion to approve general at one hundred seventeen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-six cents.
I'll say. Have a first and second from Trish and Brian on the general. Any other comments on it? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Let be known that passes four zero.
I have payroll vouchers in the amount of ninety thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Make a motion that we approve payroll at ninety thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Second, have a first and second from Trish and Brian again for the payroll vouchers. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Let be known that passes four zero.
I have wastewater vouchers in the amount of six hundred and six thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-four cents.
Make a motion to approve six hundred and six thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-four cents to wastewater.
So moved, or second.
Part of the law.
Second.
Okay, I have a first from Trish and a second from Mike. Uh, if there's no other discussion on the wastewater voucher, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Let be known that passes four zero.
You say this, it's like way, way.
You can initially each page in both of these, one place for signature back here, this is client signature.
Okay.
At your leisure.
Is this time you have to sign?
Yeah, initials, yeah. Your employee working out?
She is, she's still, so girl, I have her there.
Cool. You having any luck finding anybody?
Yeah, I hired someone. She will start a week from the next, well, probably within a month when it just starts.
Cool.
I haven't heard of her, I'm ready.
Yeah, she came in double.
Yeah, did it a A or did it a F?
She got a N.
I hadn't heard it, kinda scared, like, hmm, she didn't go so well.
Oh, no, I was just, she was fine.
Okay. Uh, we're all done with the signing of the vouchers. We can adjourn for the evening.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
I have first and second from Brian and Mike to adjourn the regular council meeting for the evening. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Let be known that passes four zero.
So you just prepare the evening.
Just give her a, yeah.
He don't, no, you just prepare the evening.
Give me a full. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
What were y'all digging up here for?
Looking for that water. Yeah, see that trace water.
Oh, my God, I wonder why y'all were digging up out there all this, like, two or three days out there.
We are still gonna be recording for redevelopment.
Oh.
We're staying live on YouTube for redevelopment.
Okay.
Not for the example.
I guess they're gonna handle that, I'm honest. For you?
I don't know, they typically do, yeah.
I think we have to.
Okay.
I think we're pissed.
I'll get back at it tomorrow. I appreciate it, I'll give you my, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Redevelopment to order.
Yeah, I'd like to call redevelopment to order. Um, can you take a chance?
Yep, row call. Jason Little, absent, Tricia Ball.
Here.
Kevin Burke.
Here.
Mike Jovanis.
Here.
And Brian Moore.
Here.
Me, um, what business do we have in redevelopment? Mr. Attorney?
I have for your consideration Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one, Resolution of the Town of Santa Claus Redevelopment Commission, twenty twenty-five budget year determination for TIF revenues. With regard to the amusement and commercial allocation area, you would be determining by this resolution that you are retaining all of the tax income financing for the district for this year.
Okay.
So I would just be a motion to approve the passage of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one.
So moved.
I second that.
You have a first by Mike and a second by Kevin. Um, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None opposed, passes four zero.
I also have for your consideration Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero two, Resolution of the Town of Santa Claus Redevelopment Commission, twenty twenty-five budget year determination for TIF revenues. With regard to the industrial park allocation area in which you are determining that you are retaining all of the tax income financing for the district for this year.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by Mike and a second by Brian. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay? Nope, so it passes four zero.
Sign both of them, yeah, if you would, thank you. Uh, that does authorize me or directly order me to send out the, we have sent out like seven notices every year to all the other taxing authorities that then can protest it. Nor anyone can respond, so.
Yeah.
Those are all certified rated.
So far, so good.
Yeah.
Anything else, sir?
That's all I've got for you.
Does anyone else have any business for redevelopment? We're all clear? Would, um, someone like to entertain a motion to close this meeting?
Uh, this got me down as president.
Redevelopment.
Cindy just copied the signature block, Brown.
Can we just?
Yeah, just.
Yeah. We'll do that.
Nobody ever sees that.
Yeah, I know.
I did.
Oh, we can't adjourn till we sign, so take back my motion to adjourn.
Yeah, you can adjourn.
Not till we sign, yeah.
Vouchers, vouchers are the ones you have to sign in a public meeting.
Oh, okay. Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I second that.
Okay, we have first by Mike and a second by Kevin. All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, we are officially adjourned.